We're going to call to all of the special alternative and early childhood subcommittee. Can you please call the roll?
Mr. Agnew?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Perera?
Here.
Will you stand for us to look to the flag? All right, pledge your allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First we'll turn the open meeting law. Any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting to any meeting. And these are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Do we have any citizen input?
There is none.
No citizen input, we'll go right to the first agenda item is an update on early childhood.
Hi, good evening. So we continue to expand our programming this year, opening the new site at 2501 South Main Street. There are currently nine classrooms in that building. With that, it brings us to currently thirty-two preschool classrooms across eight sites throughout the city. We are in the process of opening the final classroom at the 2501 The Full River Learning Center site, which will bring us to thirty-three classrooms. We have a total capacity to serve six hundred and nine children in those classrooms. Nineteen of the classrooms are full day and have our four and five-year-olds who are in their last year of preschool and will be heading to kindergarten in the fall. And the remaining fourteen classrooms are half-day sessions. And those serve mixed age groups, children ages three to five, who are children with disabilities. As well as our integrated half-days also have slots for four- and five-year-old children from the community that will be heading to kindergarten. As you know, our preschool program is foundationally a special education program. We do also serve children from the community in our integrated classrooms. And so we populate our preschool classrooms based on referrals for special education. At this time, as of February first of this year, we have received two hundred and thirty-five referrals for special education evaluations for children ages three to five. Those referrals come from early intervention, pediatrician's office, community childcare programs, as well as directly from families or community providers. Our obligation is to evaluate and have services in place for children transitioning to us on their third birthday. Our referral rate continues to rise. So as of February first, we have been referred forty-two additional children than the number we had at that time last year. Last year, we took in about three hundred and forty referrals. So we are projecting to be quickly approaching four hundred for this school year. That's been pretty consistent over the last few years. We've seen a fifteen to twenty percent increase each year in the last probably four years, which is kind of the basis for why we continue to expand in order to meet our obligation under IDEA to provide services for children with disabilities ages three to five. We have had to continue to open additional classrooms to meet that need. Additionally, as I mentioned, so in order to have integrated programs, we have children from the community who are in our classrooms as peer models. We seat those children in classrooms through a lottery. Our lottery is currently open for September for next school year. It opened on January second, runs until March thirty-first. At that time, we will conduct developmental screenings and the lottery process to offer seats to families. As of February first, we had received two hundred and forty-one applications to the preschool lottery. That is a hundred more than we received in the same month last year. We have, we are anticipating if structures stay the same to have about two hundred and sixty seats for community peers. And so we're anticipating probably applications of around three hundred and fifty families for those two hundred and sixty seats. Our current enrollment, we have three hundred and six students with disabilities who are in classroom placements, and additional ninety-one children who are serviced either through walk-in services or who we go out into their community-based program to provide services to them. And we currently have two hundred and ten peers from the community in our classrooms.
Any questions? Corey?
Yes, thank you for the breakdown. So since the inception of early childhood, it seems to be on a trajectory that continues to grow. How do you see that in the next foreseeable five-to-ten-year future?
You know, it's hard to say. We had, so we are, this growth is not unique to Full River. We're seeing it across the state and nationwide. The needs of our little ones continue to grow. We had really thought a good amount of what we were seeing was COVID-related. These are children who were born into that environment. And so opportunities to build social skills, to build communication skills. We're seeing lots of delays in finding gross motor skills that we hadn't seen to this level before. With that, we thought this year we'd start to see some stabilization. Because as we're taking kids in who are three, we're now looking at kids who were born in 2021 and had more of traditional opportunities. But it's not stabilizing the way we thought it has. So I mean, I'm not really sure at this point how to project it. I know we talk a lot about it. There are a variety of groups of early childhood coordinators that meet throughout the state in different, you know, types of communities. And we're all kind of facing the same thing and really struggling with, how do we project what our needs are for classrooms for next year? This rate of growth continues to grow in a way that we just can't sustain.
Yeah. Could you classify, when a child is screened, okay, what are they looking for as far as the disability is concerned?
So at screenings, we're really looking for, you know, early development. And so we use a couple of different screening tools that look at children's language skills. Are they speaking in phrases that are, you know, at least two or three words? Is their speech intelligible? We look at, are they developing fine motor skills? And so we'll have them make developmental strokes on a page. Can they make a straight line? Can they make a circle? You know, what does that look like? We look at their gross motor skills and, you know, how, if they can, what they look like when they walk? Can they balance on one foot? Are they able to hop? And so yeah, some of those early things we see are late toddlers kind of being able to do. For academic skills, it's really recognizing familiar objects, you know, in the world. And do they know what things are or what their purpose is? Are they able to identify some of the basic colors? Do they, are they able to tell you their first and last name? Do they know how old they are? So it's some of those really early skills that we're looking to see. Is this child developing the way we would expect?
As far as those early skills are concerned, in the early education environment, have you seen how it translates to kindergarten or first grade?
Yeah, and so what we're seeing a lot of is kiddos that we are catching early, we're able to start to build some of those skills for them to be able to learn how to learn. So what happens a lot when we get kiddos in is they don't even have sort of those basic skills of how to adapt to a schedule when it's not sort of at will, how to follow a routine, how to, you know, complete something that may not be your favorite thing to do. And so we start really working on those early skills. For kiddos that we're able to catch early, we're seeing that transition into kindergarten being more successful. The demand and the expectation in K is high.
Yeah, of course.
And so when we bring kids into that, not having had that experience, this is where we're seeing, you know, our K staff really struggle with kiddos who aren't able to sit and attend, aren't able to regulate, aren't able to follow the routines without really a high level of support. And then they're not able to access the academic piece because we're spending so much time helping them regulate their body and being able to adapt to the environment that they're missing out on a lot of the academic skills.
Yeah, I mean, I really hope it translates into that. I know that kids at the K in one level have been more emboldened of late in their behaviors as compared to a decade ago. There's been a huge societal, you know, change. And so I just want to make sure that everything that we're doing in early childhood is helping to pave the way, you know, to this earlier development, the scientific development that's going on with the frontal lobe, the whole thing, you know? And how it translates into our reading scores for the elementary level, especially the third-grade reading scores when they start to get noticed.
Yeah, and that's something we're starting to look at too. So we, this is the first year we've had the ability to offer our, particularly focused our students with disabilities first because that is our initial purpose for having the program, to be able to offer the kiddos who are in their last year of preschool before going to kindergarten, the opportunity to participate in a full-day classroom. And so we're taking our kiddos whose skills are most delayed. We're putting them the first year, year and a half, in a half-day program, bringing them up to a full-day program, and then transitioning them to kindergarten, right? So we're creating that smoother transition so that they can be more successful. Because we are, just as you described, seeing our little ones come in with less and less ability to regulate their emotions. And so spending a lot of time teaching children how to recognize what they're feeling and then what to do about it. When they're in an environment where it isn't, they're not the sole child there, where they can get necessarily all of that, you know, individualized attention, where they can be self-directed in the way they really want to be.
Are the parents invited in?
Yeah, so we run our preschool very similar to other, we have open house, we have parent-teacher conferences, you know, we have other opportunities for families to come in. We also send a lot of information home on what are we doing in school? What's the language we use for this? What are the visuals we use for this?
So that's all part of the conditional movement as well. If we can condition parents from early childhood, especially with the transition into elementary school, then maybe we got the parents hooked for a good long time over their child's early development. I hope that's one of the keys of the early childhood program. Try to hook the parents into, you know, following their child and advocating for their child at length, you know, for whatever their needs may be.
And, you know, we, that is a goal of ours as well. We want to have really sharing relationship with our families. We are for many families, the first touch they have with the school department. We're the first people they meet. We're setting the stage for what will your relationship with your child's school be like? And so we do, we try, we communicate a ton. We try to bring families in. And we do a lot of back and forth of, you know, what works at home, what works at school, and trying to make sure there's some consistency and some flow back and forth between the school and home.
I would love to see the parents invited directly into the classroom to see the processes taking place, the academic process, developmental processes, all of that. And then I think they would see wonderful things with their children. And they would develop a great appreciation for the level of teaching and coaching that's going on from our end. Because we're certainly providing a great sense of environment for all of these developmental needs for these children. And I'm sure that the cost analysis on something like this has to be pretty high right now.
Yeah, so that's something I know that the committee's looking for. And so we will be working on creating a cost analysis for our preschool program. Once we get through, Mr. Almeida is going to work with me on that. Once the buzz is, presentation is finished next week, we're going to begin to work on that and we will get that out to you.
Thank you, I yield.
I mean, all I have to say is clearly preschool education is important for all children, right? So even though it's important that we get children at the most need. And I think it's pretty obvious, we just need to continuously look for space. Regardless of if we grow twenty percent next year or not, I'd love not to have to turn away those hundred kids who also equally would benefit. Because we know there's a fine line between a doctor or such giving a recommendation for that. You know, there's a fine line. In other words, there are kids who could benefit completely from it. That would be, you know, in kindergarten, you know, would be better for them as well. So although I understand that this is the law, you know, what we're doing, and it's great. I'm not not patting us on the back for submitting our program, but like meaning that school spending, it's just kind of following the law, it's cool. But if we could do better and more, so like I think that's the takeaway I have today. I know the work that you're doing there and it's wonderful. But the takeaway I have is we need more space. Whatever it costs, we need more space. We know we're going to need more space. So I'd like to stop being proactive with that. Regardless of if we don't know for sure what the numbers are going to be next year. But, you know, that's all, I yield.
I had a question on that. It says, we have and continue to struggle to meet the obligation. Am I implying, reading, the way I read that is that we are not meeting the obligations. But is that not accurate?
So we are today. We are in the process of opening that final classroom at Full River Learning Center. Although we ended up in a situation towards the end of last school year where we were full. And I do anticipate we are going to run into that same situation again this year. And so at the end of last year, we had children who were qualifying for special education services late in the year, our May and June birthdays, who were not able to start school until September. So we did create a classroom that we ran in the summer to provide compensatory services to those students last summer. I am concerned and I do anticipate that we're going to end up in a similar situation this year.
So how is it that when you get tested at the three and four and you provide services to some, and are we providing the bare minimum on services? Or do we, when you say special education services or specified, is there an opportunity to provide that but not have a full classroom?
Yeah, so the children, so the ninety-one children that we are servicing, the bulk of those, there's a handful of those children who are in a grant, the CPPI grant program. There's about ten of those kids who are in classrooms where we're sending a special education teacher out to the center to provide classroom-based services. The majority of our children that are service-only are children who were only eligible for speech therapy, for occupational therapy. These are kiddos who overall are developing pretty typically. Their cognitive skills, their early learning skills are typical. But speech and languages tends to be at the forefront of that, where they may have delays in their articulation skills. They may have some very mild delays in their speech and language skills. We are providing speech and language therapy only to those students. So we are not placing them in one of our classrooms. They come in for walk-in therapy. Or we send speech and language therapy out to them at whatever program they're attending in the community.
So the three hundred and six with disabilities in classroom placements, there is no, they're all totally, you need a full classroom or a half?
Correct. Those are children that have autism, children that have more global developmental delays that are requiring a higher level of services.
All.
Yeah.
And how do you determine who gets a half? Somewhere around here, I read about half-day programs.
Yeah, so for students with disabilities, children that have two or three more years of school before kindergarten go into our half-day programs. So these are our littlest guys. There are three-year-olds and our young four-year-olds. Once children are in their last year of preschool before kindergarten, and so that's that four-by-September-first cutoff, that's when they're eligible to attend a full day. It's only that one last year before kindergarten.
And if we don't have, we're obligated to provide that service at that time?
We are not obligated to provide the full day.
But we do.
But we do. Yeah, that's been something, that's been a move across the state that most districts are trying to move towards a full-day program in that true, like the pre-kindergarten last year.
I totally get it.
Yes, that is not our obligation.
When we ask for like the cost analysis, or how much does it cost? And how much do we get reimbursed?
Yeah.
Those are the pieces as well that we need to know. Because right now, we had money or whatever, and it might not always be there. So we got to know what is it that we're fully doing so that we can
Yeah, the full day is not required.
Try to make a determination. My last question or an ask was about, out of that group, you have substantially separate classrooms, is it the same as in kindergarten?
So the numbers are lower. So regulations for preschool for substantially separate is nine. Where at school-age children, it's generally twelve. So the number is lower. Programming is similar. These are our kiddos who have the greatest delays, who have the highest needs and are requiring the highest level of support.
So out of that number of three oh six, you'd have, you could get us a number of how many?
How many are substantially separate? Yeah, I can get you that.
Because we have other, like as we look at it, we have a lot of kids in substantially separate throughout the district, so.
We have a lot in preschool too.
I'd be curious to see what that is and is.
We have more in our half-day programs than in our full-day programs. So what we will tend to do is sort of try to step them out of substantially separate. Where when they come in at three, if they're really showing us a high level of need, requiring a high level of service and support, we may start them in a sub-separate program. And then our goal is by the time they're in that full day year before K, that they're attending in an integrated.
You had mentioned about not having a number or whatever. I personally think we need a five-year plan of early childhood. I also think that we always talk about universal pre-K, we just need to do it. And at that point, we need to see what the cost-benefit analysis is of, what is it costing? But the goal is to have it be universal. So you have at records of how many four-year-olds we have, how many five-year, you know, you can figure that out in a five-year plan to say, in order for us to do universal pre-K, we need twenty-seven more classrooms. Whatever the number comes out to, that's where I think we need to be looking at. Right now, we're piecing it a little too slow for my liking. And it's just five here, three there. You should never be up against, we don't have space to service a kid in the May-June whatever. Shouldn't be, it absolutely shouldn't be that way. That means we're not planning well enough in my mind if that's happening.
Yeah, we can definitely, I think one of the challenges in looking at universal pre-K and, you know, for districts that have been able to do this successfully, they do it through a mixed delivery system. There are many families who, what we are able to offer for pre-K doesn't meet the needs of the families. These are families who require longer day, longer year because part of their preschool is also childcare. And so for most districts that have successfully been able to move to universal pre-K, they do it through a mixed delivery. And so part of that is not just students that would be enrolled with us, but having enough seats throughout the community for four-year-olds who are, you know, ready in that last year before kindergarten to attend in a program that meets the needs of the family. And so it wouldn't be an expectation that the school department would have a seat for every child in the city who's four years old. But that working together with our partners, there is an available seat in the city. And we aren't there. I mean, we, I work a lot with our community partners and most of them are running waitlists as well.
Right, but that's why I think it's important that we have it to be for everyone. At that point, as you're saying, it's going to have to be a mix, it's going to have, whatever, whatever it is. But I've never seen to this day, universal pre-K, we got a thousand kids that are four years old. We would need to have space for a thousand kids. Four hundred of them are in private, you know, whatever the, we need it in a plan that says this is what it's going to cost. Because the state's going to come down and say, we want to do this, we want to put here. And then we're going to say, oh, well, we can't, we don't have space, we don't. I think we need to get a actual five-year plan that says, this is how we're going to get to everyone. Because there's going to be more questions once that gets delivered, I would say.
Yeah, absolutely.
So whatever you can do to try to expedite that to us. And is there any plan to go more, so you got thirty-three now. What is the plan for September?
We are not at a place where we have a solid plan for September yet. It's in progress.
We need space. Physical space and staffing are two biggest challenges, right? We need physical space. We are looking at options, but not necessarily to expand pre-K. It's to, we have to release some pressure in enrollment in some schools. So we are looking for, that's our priority, physical space for that. And moving those pre-K classes. So I think that we're looking at options. But we're not in a position where we can say we're going to add ten more classes because we don't have a building to add ten more classes. If we took one of our buildings, for instance, right? We said, all right, we're going to take one of our buildings, empty them out, and we're going to make it an early learning center. We could empty out the students that are at Eastern Avenue, put them there. We could take pre-K from somewhere else and put them there. We could open up additional classrooms. But we have to absorb those kids that we took out of that building somewhere else. We don't have space somewhere else in our other buildings to absorb them. So we're looking at, we do have 2501 as our option. As, we're right now as a team looking at how we're going to populate 2501 to release some pressure, and then that will ripple into what we're going to do.
Right, it's just, this isn't a secret that we need more space.
Yeah, I agree with you.
And we've been talking about this ad nauseam. And it's frustrating as one member because we've known this. We've known this, we've had money, you know, the time is way past. It's February already, and we're worried about now we don't have space because we can't, so we can't expand?
Well, we knew we didn't have space. And the Esther funds that we had do not allow us to buy a building. They don't allow us to buy a building. So even though we had, we could, we could lease a building. And as you know, we looked into leasing modular on Globe Street. We wanted to do that. We have, you know, property there that we wanted to do, but that. And we had set money aside from Esther to do that. But when we did an analysis of how much it was going to cost to prepare that land to bring, to build those modules, et cetera, the cost was more than any of us anticipated, more than we paid, we paid for a building, or we're paying for a building. So it was not, it didn't, it wasn't fiscally sound. That wasn't a good plan. So we have to go back to, I mean, we have, you know, we are constantly looking throughout the city to see if there are any spaces that we could potentially rent, lease, or whatever, to add more space. I'm with you, I agree, we need it. It's not for a lack of trying or for looking.
Yeah, I just think we, we need to get, print the paper and, and then when one thing doesn't go, you got to pivot to something else. Because now we have Globe Street, like this building, is that totally, you can't repair that building?
Well, we can, we probably can repair that building. Just like we'd repair Wiley, but Wiley, we would spend millions of dollars to repair a building that's going to give us six classrooms or eight classrooms, right? So there are constraints in regards to pre-K. Ideally, it would be, it would make sense for us to have a one-level spot where we could, because they're little, they can't go up more than, you know, two flights of stairs. You can't put kids on the third floor, pre-K kids on the third floor for safety reasons. So, you know, I mean, certainly we can look. Yes.
So, yeah, so it depends on sort of how you think about it. But yes, so at Full River Learning Center, we are on sort of the basement or ground level as well as the first floor. And so that takes it like up one flight of stairs, right?
You're on the first floor where there's an aggressive case.
But there's a fire.
Correct. So you can't really have a second floor. How's this South mean, as far as we doing it for other classrooms, for older students who could use that space? How's that coming? We know we need to inhabit that for the fall. Yeah, okay. So they're working on the top two floors. We need to finish that up. But our plan is to, you know, populate that building. They're trying to figure out what makes the most sense for us to, 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 because we could potentially say, all right, so in my mind, you know, this hypothetical, right? Where I don't have the power to make those decisions just by myself, right? Because financial decisions, decisions take a lot more. But we could say, oh, we're going to make a pre-K to eight, that sounds great. We're going to make a pre-K to eight. We would only be able to do a two-unit school. How many kids is it going to impact? Where's that, where are we going to absorb those kids to put there? And what does that mean in the schools that, you know, is it just going to be a difference of, you know, like two kids in one class, three kids? It's not really going to give us a lot of bang for our buck. I'm not saying it's not. I'm just saying in thinking that this discussions that we've had. Oh, if we made it pre-K to five, okay, could we squeeze in three units, three of each? That we could do that. Could we just say we're going to move, you know, a whole group from a school and then make space somewhere else? So we're looking at demographics. We know that, for instance, Fonska is the most densely populated neighborhood. Really, there are twelve hundred kids that actually could go to Fonska because they, that's their neighborhood school. But it's not built for twelve hundred kids. So they are at capacity, but there are kids that belong at Fonska that are being bused elsewhere in the city, wherever there's space. So we're looking at all those things to try to see what makes the most sense to alleviate some of our issues and to, for us to maximize what we have.
Yeah, in the past, like we've had meetings and task forces or whatever. Maybe you can look back at the records and see what those were. Any suggestions? I suggested looking at the Dershowitz, where the pay center was instead. That was three years ago. If we did that then, we'd have another ten classrooms, whatever the amount of classrooms could be. That's the kind of thing that I'm talking about.
Yeah.
We look at, I was just watching the city council thing with the Bank Street Avenue. Can we do, put ten, fifteen, twenty classrooms in a Bank Street Avenue? And save that building and, you know, use our resources to to work with the city to save that building. There's plenty of different options. I just feel like we haven't pulled the trigger on it. We just keep saying, oh, well, we'll go here. We took that pipe dream of the Globe Street is, and we spent three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for nothing.
Well, it wasn't for nothing, we would have known that we couldn't do it.
Yeah.
Right?
It was, I think it was, so. All I'm saying is let's try to get a plan together. And what I would like to do is have another meeting in thirty days where you come back to this committee with a solid plan. And we'll call that meeting after, you know, whenever people can make it. Who's the call?
I just wanted to add, I'll be brief. Kristen, is this early childhood program mandated by Department of Education? Are those mandated? As far as the trajectory of growth is concerned, are they putting any pressure on our? on our city to grow it by certain levels each year?
So, no, so there, there is lots of conversation at the state level about the move towards universal pre-K, and so I think that's sort of the advocacy pressure that, that we get to grow is more towards universal pre-K.
Yeah.
Where, where kind of our growth obligation really is to the students with disabilities, so the the requirement for us to have preschool programming is related to students ages three to five with disabilities.
Sure.
And we have to have appropriate programs to meet the needs of those students, and so right now, that's sort of what dictates our growth.
But there are still gonna be limits because we have spa- space limitations in place. So there are gonna be limits as to how the program continues to move forward year after year.
Well, that's the struggle we have, because yes, we are limited by our space and we do have those constraints, however, the students are the students and we can't control that.
May- maybe the state will send down some money for us to build the building, who knows?
We would love that, we would love for preschool to be, what is it, MSBA eligible.
Who knows? But, I want to ask the superintendent, as far as the DeValt School is concerned, we, we may have an opportunity to get that building back, and that could serve some of the overflow and the flip. That's, that's just an idea that flashed in my head, I was also concerned about the Wiley School and the Stone School, I don't know if those are potential options down the road, I know that there's infrastructure needs for those buildings, but they may be cheaper than building a whole brand-new complex.
I think that the mo- I mean, I, obviously, I'm not, that's not my expertise, but I think the most cost-effective piece might be that we look into the Pace Center in, like, doing exactly that and creating some preschool space. I think we have to look, we, because we have that space there.
Yeah, whichever way you guys can get creative, you're gonna have to get creative.
If we fix that, we can.
I certainly, I'm not in on those developmental meetings, but you guys can forge a plan forward and figure it out with all, with all of this. How long has this program been, uh, in service now, three years?
The preschool program?
Yeah.
No, it predates my coming over to Fall River Education.
But what about, what about when the chamber pushed, uh, through Joanne Springer and all of that, is this, is that all part of this too?
Uh, yes and no, some of it is really more around our reach into the community and our collaboration with community-based programs.
So, so the, the Chamber Commerce was really loudly advocating for early childhood
Mm-hmm.
on, based on the scientific studies, and I'm just wondering if they're in touch with any grant funding pathways maybe to help us in our endeavors to grow this program righteously, you know, the, the right way.
A- and there may be, I think, we just, you know, a- as Maria has said, right now, we need to identify the physical space. Looking at, there, there are definitely funding sources and ways to partner with some of our, um, folks in the community, but physical space is a limitation.
My last question is, are the teachers and staff, uh, who work this program, they're all part of the entire teaching staff of our, of our district, right?
Right.
And those students are also part of the, uh, general population of our district, is that correct?
Yeah.
Right, although their, their reimbursement is different than a typical student.
That's all I know, I think. Yes, thank you, I yield.
Anything else, huh?
We'll have a short-term and a long-term plan, because I think we have short-term immediate needs as well as a long-term plan.
Yep, yep.
Thank you. Uh, moving right on, uh, to the new IEP rollout. And I, just before you start, I can say we did get a lot of information from Ms. Obenchain, and I think it was well put together, there's a lot of info here.
I appreciate that, yeah.
So I would say just kind of go over it personally, and I, the whole committee's gonna get this as well.
I'm just gonna summarize, yeah. Yes, they will, they will.
Because I looked at it myself and I said, wow, this is pretty much like.
Before you start, can you, I, my papers are all jumbled, is there a certain order?
Sure. Yep, so this is the timeline that you have that talks about the new IEP rollout. This is the first one, although, alright, you got that one?
Yeah.
Okay, so just so that people are aware, the, uh, Desi is rolling out a new IEP that all, um, school districts are mandated to implement in September. We knew this has been coming, they've been working on it for years, the last time the actual IEP was updated, the form itself um, was two thousand and one, so it's been several years. But it's important for families and, you know, everyone in the community to understand, the process for special education is not changing. It is just the document, but there are some significant changes to the document. One of the goals of the department is to elevate student voice. So now they want students as young as three years old in our pre-Ks providing some input into their IEP, whether it's through pointing at pictures, drawing, all of those pieces. So that is one of the big changes, but like you said, Mr. Iger, the subcommittee did receive the whole timeline um, and kind of what our plan is, so I'm just gonna summarize quickly. In the fall, the three of us went to training by the Department of Education. We brought that training back to our district, we developed what we are gonna be rolling out tomorrow as far as training documents for our current special education teachers and administrators. Um, we also are being supported by my leadership team in the Special Education Department through our special education supervisors. So we're able to give them, um, uh, the professional development is smaller groups, because we have a large special education department, right? So about groups of anywhere from twenty-five to fifty, depending on, um, the buildings. We'll be doing that tomorrow, we also, um, have a joint labor management committee um, that chose to address the rollout to families. So we've been meeting, um, monthly on that, and we actually have a couple parents joining that committee. So we've come up with, um, questions that parents, we can give parents ahead of time, so that they come, should the IEP meeting prepared, knowing the form is gonna look very different for them. We're talking about training at CPAC. Those are the pieces that we put in place, and then we outlined the remaining tasks that need to get done prior to the September rollout. Um, our assistant Aspen is already ready with the new IEP document, it's actually available for us to kind of play around with, even though it's not live yet. Um, but we're looking to, um, bring on teacher leaders once we, or mentors for the, for the IEP rollout. Once we train all of our district staff, we want in the summer, in the fall buildings to have people there that they can go to, to, if there is a question, right? Because we're training a lot of people now, but we're actually not able to implement it till the fall. So I wanna make sure that there's people, touch points in the buildings, um, throughout our district, so that they feel like if they have questions or they're struggling, they have someone to go to. So once we train everybody, we'll be looking for volunteers, um, to do that work. And that's kind of the new IEP.
Any questions from the IEP?
I just have one question.
That's personal.
It's, I, clearly, it's a, it's a more intense document, right, there's like more pages, it's more involved.
Sixty pages.
So how, and, and I, clearly, you noticed that it was very much student-centered too in it, which is nice, but how much more time are we talking, like, compared to what a regular IEP would take?
Yeah.
What is this added to our work?
It's a great question, yeah, it's a great question, so what the, uh, what Desi is encouraging districts to do, and we've been fortunate, our team chairs have been going through a leadership academy, and they have been working on how to facilitate a meeting using the new IEP, where instead of, you're sitting at a table and we all go around and we all speak, you know, individually. It's actually a conversation, so when we're talking about student strengths, if the SLP, the speech person is there, I can fill that out under the speech section while people are talking, because we're all talking about the same, um, type of content, and then we can distribute it that way. So they're encouraging us to facilitate meetings a little bit differently, but like, when anything's new, meetings are going to take longer. We're going to try to do, um, you know, prep work with families ahead of time at open houses to show them, so that when they come in, they're not asking, how does this look compared to my old document? Where is this in my old document? We actually have, um, a specialized surrogate parent on our, uh, JLMC and, um, DCF worker on that committee too, so they're gonna be all familiar with it as well.
Who's the caller?
As far as, uh, revising, uh, I'm gonna go back to the beginning when you were meeting in the fall, and you guys were going over accommodations and modifications and that kind of thing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one of my biggest gripes as a counselor in the schools was sometimes the way the accommodations were written would stranglehold an adjustment counselor's caseload time. And so I just wonder where that's, where that piece is heading toward right now.
So can you give me an example of what do you mean by strangle?
Well, I, I would have, I had this case with an autistic child, and the mother was a strong advocate. Um, and she was adamant about, um, my time as the adjustment counselor spent, I can't remember what the specifics were throughout the week, but I knew that it was just too much time for this one case in regard to the other five hundred cases I had.
Sure, so that's.
So I'm dealing with five hundred and fifty caseload, but I have to give a, a lot of time to this one case.
So that's, um, actually service delivery and not an accommodation, maybe it was listed that way then, but now it could be said as service delivery. That is actually one of my goals for next year, is to look at our service delivery, um, model and how we're providing that, because what people think sometimes, more is always better. But what, we have to understand that cert- when we are providing direct service to a student, that means they are not able to independently utilize skills or to practice, right? They always rely on the adjustment counselor to be there to talk through whatever's going on, instead of saying, let's take what you learned, now you need to be independent. You've received these services, we've talked about this, you know what to do, right? Now I need to see you do it. And so it's getting parents to understand that, yes, our goal is to teach them skills, but our goal is also to make them independent with those skills. And if we're tied to them all the time, if they're getting seven hundred minutes a week of your individual time, we're actually preventing them from ever developing that independence. And that's really the conversations we need to start having, um, that more doesn't mean they're going to do better, right? More means now we link them with more time with direct services from an adult, and it actually hinders their ability to internalize those skills and be independent.
Yeah, I'm just looking not to hamstring the counselors, because, uh, it, 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 it's just, it's, it's a difficult thing, because they're already working really, really hard in so many other capacities.
Yep, and, yeah.
And, and for an IEP to just nail them down on one case, that's, I'm, I'm gonna continue to advocate for the adjustment counselors on that behalf.
Well, we've added adjustment counselors throughout the district, so that specifically, Mr. Agnew brought that up, at the school committee meeting, that, um, we had to, we submitted minutes that kids needed, and we made sure that we were staffed equitably at each school, so that we had an additional guidance uh, additional, uh, school adjustment counselor at each middle school and at all schools, so that they could be, make sure that they are, um, receiving the, the services that are on the IEP.
Good. Thank you.
And the, um, just to piggyback on that, so the five hundred and fifty caseload doesn't exist anymore, so.
Yeah.
And the high school is eleven or twelve school adjustment counts, there's actually more. When you were there, there was two Saks and ten guidance counselors.
Well, there, there were four Saks when I was there.
But there was a time when there was two, then it went to four, now it's twelve.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, when I, when I started, there were only eighteen Saks in the entire district.
So, point's well taken that we, we're doing more with that, but it, his, this point is well taken, that you gotta be careful how much time you put in that service delivery, and it has to be what the kid needs versus, just, so that's just training of what you can do.
Right, and what does that mean?
Moving on to the, the next one, specialized programming update.
Sure, so one of our department goals this year.
Is that this year, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes it is. So one of our department goals this year was to really look at our, um, substantially separate classrooms. Redefining and restructuring really what they looked like, because, um, as you saw in your backup documents, we are twice over the state average for students in substantially separate settings, right? So we have nine hundred and forty students currently in substantially separate, out of our, a little over three thousand special education students. And, um, what concerns me, because Fall River is such a large district, right, and we have so many students, that students that are in substantially separate programs at a very young age, they tend to stay in those programs throughout middle school, throughout high school, and they're actually graduating from those programs. So when I put together a task force to really look at, you know, where our numbers were, what was, um, creating this gap where kids were staying in these substantially separate classrooms for their entire career, right, the goal would be to service them early on and then be able to move them out. And one of the things, the task force, and my task force had teachers, VCBAs, psychologists, specialized supervisors, a lot of different, um, staff from across the district, right? And one of the things we noticed was there was no partial inclusion model for kids. So you're either fully in general education in the inclusion classrooms, or you're substantially separate. The few students that do push out here and there, there was not, there's not like a, a plan on how we're gonna keep moving them out. It's, oh, they're strong in math, great, let's put them in math. Yes, and how do we keep going with that? They're successful in math, how do we try science? They might be interested in science. So what you, what we ended up, um, giving you with the new program descriptions, if they um, right now are still in draft form, because I have met with, um, every principal and the principals that currently have substantially separate programs, to talk about whether or not a new a couple new classrooms with our partial inclusion options were feasible. And the, the response from the district has been very positive and very much that it's needed. So right now, we're still getting stakeholder input from other, like, you know, important members of our department, so more teachers, team chairs, those psychologists as a group, the VCBAs as a group. I don't anticipate major changes from what you have tonight, um, but I'd like to be able to bring those to the full committee in March, so that we can start, um, you know, looking at students who are ready for a partial inclusion program. The students that are in our substantially separate programs that were prior to them, they're still substantially separate programs. All we did with the program descriptions was to give teams more information when making those decisions. So we changed the names to not be disability-based, but basically what, um, how students are gonna be serviced in those programs, or what the purpose of the programs are, right? And then we gave teams some entrance guidelines, it doesn't mean it's set in stone, it doesn't mean there's not room for flexibility. But these are some guidelines, so that we are making sure when we determine students need a substantially separate placement, that we have some evidence or some data to support that. So the only, um, um, grow is the new program for our incoming kindergarteners, and that is really students who are in an integrated preschool with us already, so they already are with typical peers part of the time. But instead of being recommended for substantially separate, which would have happened previously because the preschool team felt like they weren't ready for kindergarten, right, or full inclusion kindergarten. Now we have this option where we have a partial inclusion program, so the kids will still be in a substantially separate program. However, they will have the opportunity every single day to participate in inclusion with their general ed peers. With the hope of by the end of that kindergarten year, they can be fully included, that is the goal for us. So it might start with, they go in for morning meeting, they go in for centers, and as the students develop, because it really is about developing either the foundational skills that are holding them back, or the, um, ability to transition, follow routines, um, be able to interact with peers in socially appropriate ways. So we're gonna work on those outside of the setting, outside of the general education setting, and the staff is gonna support them when they go in, right? So we have that piece for our incoming K, and then in middle school, um, a partial inclusion model is when students spend at least sixty percent of their day in the general education setting. They can spend anywhere between, um, sixty percent all the way down to like eighty, eighty percent, e- seventy-something percent, right? So at least sixty percent of their day in the full inclusion setting. When I look at our middle school schedule, if they're in for one core content to start, our advisory block, which everybody's developing skills, um, we have WIN, which is what I need. So if they're partnered with, if I'm learning to read in middle school and you're learning to read, you're general ed, I'm specialized, we can be partnered together, that's an inclusion opportunity, and then Unified Arts, which many of them already are in Unified Arts, right? That gives us sixty percent of the time. What we miss is that core content and then keep pushing them into more, to see if we can get them there. So those are the only two new programs, otherwise it's our existing programs, just more clearly defined. And so parents understand what this program means, because we do have some families that have students in our, um, it's going to be called PREP, but it's now our community-based program. They don't use grade-level curriculum, yet families want them to take MCAS. Which again, we can disagree and, and, you know, MCAS is a thing from the state and we have nothing, no control over that, but it's not, it's not, we have to do our due diligence to educate. But it's not, it's not, we have to do our due diligence to educate families that if you want them in this program. That is not the M C A S track. Because they can sit in front of the test all day, but we're not teaching them the skills they need to access that test. So it's misleading, so I wanna be very clear with families on those types of things. Yes, very much in congruence, right? So in those descriptions, it outlines that, and that gives teams something to have a conversation about.
Are these the students that's staying with us until around twenty-one, twenty-two years old?
Not all of them, but yes, some of them.
And then they transition into.
Adult services.
Yeah, adult services, yeah.
Yes, but not all of them do, some of them graduate at twelfth grade.
Was that your caseload too? Did you have that caseload as well? You still have that caseload. How's the staffing holding up as far as that entire program is concerned?
Which one?
I mean, she's she's dedicated, you know, years and years.
Our highest turnover tends to be in the substantially separate classrooms, it's hard work all day long. You know, and we're asking teachers to teach multiple contents, some of them have to teach multiple grades. Because the students, you know, we don't, we might only have two sixth graders and eight seventh graders, we can't have two different classes, right? You know, we try, the buildings try their best to limit as much as they can, but it still is. And you're with the same kids and the same staff all day long, so it's hard. So many of our classrooms, again, are not filled with licensed teachers, that's another concern of mine. Like if I'm learning math, not from a math teacher.
Can the collaboratives help at all?
As far as staffing goes?
As far as, as far as taking on some caseload?
We've sent some.
So we do send some students out, we have about a hundred and seven students that are out of district for us, so at a collaborative setting. I do this year have two contracted B C V As, but they're only part-time to support us here, they come to us. The collaboratives are just as short-staffed as we are.
Yeah, since COVID, probably, they struggled. COVID interrupted so much as far as staffing is concerned. It's a different landscape now than it was pre-COVID. So even the collaboratives are struggling with staff. Because I know that their facilitation is pretty cool, they they have a lot of. Therapeutic stuff in their facilities that help these cases.
Of course, of course. And we do, we send our highest need students that we really feel like we can't meet their needs here. But our goal is to keep as many with us as we we can, you know? So that's kind of the work of the task force.
Thank you.
Um, good, you had started off, just, I'm just kind of in my mind how off we are from different districts. You had started off by saying we have more substantially separate classrooms. And looking at the numbers, I mean, nine forty, nine fifty, whatever, so almost a third, right? What does other districts look like? How often we from?
The average is sixteen, sixteen percent of their total special ed population. We're at thirty-one.
Yeah, we're, we're, yeah, I guess that about a third, okay. So I like what, I like what you're saying, obviously, it's not a quick fix, obviously, we need more special ed teachers.
And that's why we need to start it smaller, right? Yeah, we have to start off smaller. And realistically, we just had our, Desi was just here for our T F M, our site visit. And one of the things they commented on is how many substantially separate classrooms.
So this is like, yeah.
Before they tell us we're gonna do some, we need to do something, we wanna get out ahead of it. It's right for kids, really. So every, the staffing, we're gonna use our existing staffing, our existing classrooms, our existing pairs. All of those pieces, we don't need, we're not gonna open anything new, we're gonna use the existing.
The last page of your, this particular sheet. And I voted, like my colleagues, for a lot of things we've added staff to you, we put some pressure on you to make sure you do things right. And this last bullet box talks about the percentage of students with an active I E P prior to expiration date. Last year was seventy-eight, now it's ninety-four percent.
Oh, that's, that's the next piece, that is not this one, I'm sorry, Mr. Agnew, that is under the.
I'm giving you a compliment anyway. It was twenty-four percent, now it's sixty-two percent, like, we always wanted to be higher, but. There is fruit at the, like, we add the positions, we put pressure on you, we try to do, but there's a lot of good things that are happening, so I wanted to be careful of that. Any helps on this before I jumped the gun and went to the next one? Is that the next one, compliance?
Yes, yeah, and I'm gonna actually turn it over to Jim.
Are we on this sheet now?
Oh, sorry.
Where did it's number three?
No, they don't have number, I have number five, so I keep track.
Improving systems and structures in special education. So really, we looked at, at least give you an update on three different buckets here. So the first one really is around improvement of compliance. And I wanted to give you guys kind of a picture of where we were at, so if you look at the background data that we use. We looked at our last tiered focus monitoring view for Group A, which was our compliance pieces. That was done in the twenty twenty to twenty-one school year. We looked at really the last special education process and procedures update, which was completed in twenty fifteen. And then we also looked at an analysis of complaints that we have received from Desi. Specifically, the problem resolution system office at the Desi level. So in order to address a lot of those concerns, what we've been doing this year. I've led a task force comprised of two special ed teachers, four tier, two special ed supervisors, four team chairs. And we just added a special ed teacher to overhaul and. You know, really kind of tweak our process and procedures and just update them and bring them up into what we, how we currently operate. It's been a few years since we've updated them. In that work, we started in November, we came up with a timeline, scope and sequence, we've tackled nine different items. And and really looked at our process and procedures. A lot of the stuff is very similar to what we've been doing, but we have some tweaks to update it and make it relevant for current practice, current staffing. So when you look at the nine items, they're really largely around the referral process, evaluations, students transferring into the district, what we do when we have newcomers. And then facilitation of team meetings. So it, gotten a lot done. We do have eight items that we're looking to tackle between now and the end of our process. And then once we do that, in the late spring, we intend on sending it to Mrs. Odencham for final revisions and approval. So what that'll look like for our process and procedures is essentially a manual of what to do, how to do it. And it's all tied to compliance with Desi regulations.
And it's also required, you're required to have written process and procedures for special education.
And then the last piece of that, we have used some models from other districts of comparable size to help in that work. And the input of the stakeholders around the table at that task force has been integral, because they really are the people doing the work every day. And then the next piece, I'll just kind of quickly talk about the P R S complaints. If we look at, and I kind of, same thing for both that and the compliance update, and looked at the same window of time. To give you guys kind of a, at least a comparable analysis, so from September twenty-three to January twenty-four. So if we're looking at this school year, same timeframe last school year, our P R S complaints have decreased by fifty percent. So if we look at the advent, or we look at the addition of, you know, our special education supervisors. The addition of some of those, the addition of some of the team chairs. We're getting ahead of different issues that parents are bringing to us and we're be, we're able to resolve those. And we're collaboratively with families in, at least faster, which has been very nice to see, so I mean, the the proof is there. For the compliance piece of it, we actually started using a district-wide compliance tracker. So we had different tracking systems that were in place previously that tracked the same things, they were communicating with each other. Now we use one kind of global and centralized system. And all stakeholders in our office are using that to be able to monitor compliance and get ahead of any potential issues.
And you look at it too regularly, so we keep, we both have access now to it as well.
So I mean, it's something that I manage. And, you know, those are the numbers that Mr. Agnew talked about already. When I look at where we were this point last year, so if you look at January and think about what the work we had done halfway through the year. Seventy-eight percent of our I E Ps were active and we hadn't reached that expiration date, so they were in compliance. This point now, we're looking at ninety-four percent. So we're catching a lot of, a lot of these kids before something happens, before something goes out of compliance, we're catching mistakes. We're doing that a lot more proactively collaboratively with families and the work really is paying off. Same thing with the reevaluation pieces, we've gone from twenty-four percent completed by that three-year due date to sixty-two percent. Now that number looks lower than I think it should, than it should be. We have to keep in mind what we're doing to increase that is we're really trying to work collaboratively with families and get consents to evaluate back in a timely manner. We've added DocuSign as a part of that process, so there are some efforts to increase it, and I anticipate that number is going to climb. Given the efforts and where we are, it's just.
DocuSign has been very supportive for our family.
I'm like, oh, this is gonna be.
Very supportive for our family, we are getting things back so fast.
And the, the nice thing about this, if you look at that sixty-two percent, that is September to January, the end of January. DocuSign was launched at the beginning of January.
Questions, Mr. Corey?
Yeah, so as far as the referral processes are concerned. Have you seen the numbers of referrals grow over the past maybe one to two years?
I would say so, yes.
When I started here a year ago, we had twenty-seven hundred students eligible for special education. Now we have over three thousand in one year. Currently, last time I pulled the numbers of referrals, the month of January, we had fi, over five hundred referrals. For special education in January.
For the year.
So far.
Not five hundred in January.
So not, that were still in the referral, no, not for January, but not for the year either, because they were still in the referral stage.
I just didn't think it was monthly.
But they're still in the referral stage, so we have that forty-five days to actually complete the eligibility process. So they're still in that window of time.
Well, I could tell you that with my history, going back into the eighties, in the nineties, in the early twenty-first century. The entire sped department was, was in shambles. At one point, it didn't even have solid leadership. And I've seen a whole lot of improvement in the structure of the sped department in the past, I'd say, ten years. Especially now having the opportunity to work with Kristen in a lot of ways and along through the years. Always, always sensitive to what's going on. But I'm, I'm pleased to see that, Jim, you're working to make the process more efficient. And growing and you're recognizing issues, you know, hopefully earlier. I'm concerned about sped staff, about holding on to the sped staff. You know, it's consistency, relationship issues between teacher and student are so crucial. Students need to have a relation, in in those settings, the better the relationship the student has with the adults around them, the caring adults. Then I think education really prospers in those moments when they know that there's a caring environment for them like that. So I'm, I'm pleased to see you guys are really working hard to make the whole, the whole of it more efficient. And and to run it with regularity. With that, I'm gonna be watching it really closely and hope that we, we maintain, you know, our. Our role in overseeing the whole thing and making sure that it's running good, thanks, Ayil.
No, just good job, I mean, you came here, like, I need more staff, I'm focusing on compliance, we're so out of compliance. And I, as like a former nurse, I'm like, that is a big problem. And yes, obviously, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, but you guys deserve a round of applause, I mean. Every, not just you, obviously, pass that on to the department. Just, it's, it makes you proud, you know, so good job.
I forgot, I forgot to ask you one question, Jim, the role of the ed advocate, how does that play in all of this? The educational advocate?
So we've worked with, that really hasn't changed a whole lot, we've worked with educational advocates on a number of cases. One of the things I will say, ed advocates are, you know, they're there to support families. And typically, they get involved to support families when families perceive that something's not going right for their child. There's either a breakdown in trust with the school, there's, the child's not making progress, the family is struggling with something for their child, so that they're in a supportive capacity. I haven't noticed a whole lot of change in that role, but I will say, I think the work that we've done. I haven't seen an increase, I don't have a number to give you, I haven't seen an increase in, in ed advocates working on cases.
There have been some all-landish cases in the past, you know, driven, driven by the advocate.
And you can, you can, I, I think you see that in any district, I will say, what I look to isn't necessarily participation from advocates. It's more like, what are the outcomes from that? So when I look at the number of P R S complaints, for example, did I see that fifty percent decrease? You know, a lot of times, P R S complaints are gonna come from people that know where to go to make those complaints, right? Maybe in those cases, advocates, attorneys that are supporting families. If we're working collaboratively and we've decreased that number, that to me shows me that we're proactively working with those folks as well.
That's good, that's good.
Good to see.
Thank you, Ayil.
And then to the next update is on staffing.
Yep, so the staffing, you know, I just gave you the breakdown, just like we're struggling. Again, every other district, we have about seventy openings in special education or over seventy opening in special education. You know, thirty of them are teachers, we have a few sites, a few team chairs, some paras, S L Ps. I mean, it's not anything that surprises me, it's kind of what the world that we're living in for the past several years, right? We're doing our best to try to interview onboard people. It is, we're doing the best we can with what.
Any questions on staffing?
As far as, what, what, what do you foresee, like, like on your wish list? What could we do to improve the overall picture of staffing?
I, I do think, you know, we have to look at us being competitive with our salaries. With other surrounding towns, right? It's no secret that we have a neighboring district that pays a lot more than us, right? Other, and the other pieces that we have to continue to make, to have staff feel like they are supported, right? So we know the needs of students are greater, that's not gonna go away, I don't foresee that going away. So we have to understand that with that comes the support for staff. And staff have to be willing to say, like, I'm willing to do the work because it's hard work, but it's needed work. Like, that's the other piece, like, we have some people that get into teaching later in their careers, like, they might be switching careers. That's a hard thing to do in the world of education right now, right?
I wish they could teach compassion at the college level, like, college-level course, just on compassion alone.
Or just understanding the problem.
Because that drives the whole, that drives everything forward. And it makes the hard days a little bit easier because there's a deep meaning to the work, you know?
Yeah, and more and more people are just leaving, I mean, they're just, you know, resigning, but I'm not resigning to go to another district, I'm resigning to get out of education.
So obviously, it's, it's making it more difficult on those who are trying to carry the load.
Yes, absolutely.
It's an extra burden on, on, on our existing staff. So competitive salaries would improve that somewhat moving forward.
I just think when people, you know, feel like they don't have to worry about, they don't have to go next door to get the money they, you know what I mean, to get.
Yeah, I don't like it when, when our teaching candidates or our teachers shop districts, I want them to stay here. I want them to feel really comfortable right here.
Right, I mean, again, I used to be in Rehoboth many years ago. And it was like Fall River Training the teachers and send them elsewhere, right? Because people would be here for three years. But I mean, again, and I was, right, that's what. So I get it, I agree with you, Mr. Corey, I, you know, I wish I had the magic wand to make people want to stay, stay in education, because.
So what we gotta do is we gotta like be more human than ever in, at every level. From the leadership level on down to the power professional in the classroom. They should be dignified and respected in, in every which way to know that everything they're doing is so meaningful toward the work of the child. That's it, if, if we could dignify them and, and respect them, they're gonna love coming to work. Thank you, Ayil.
No, everything you said is accurate, we have to pay them more, we pay them more, we have more staff, we have more staff, the staff we have feels they have more support, it's kind of a big circle.
We just can't keep doing the same thing, there's too many vacancies on here.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Obviously, negotiations, negotiations, and there's an appropriate place for that. But we can't keep doing the same thing and we're not gonna get there. So we need to do something bold and something different for specialized employees that deserve more money because of that. Because why the hell would you do it per se if you didn't have to? So it can't just be lumped as one group, it has to be for those specialized teachers, let's say, or counselors or whatever. If you have that specialty, you should get more money than the person who doesn't have that. And I'm not trying to get into negotiations, but that's where this number's too high. We can't have thirty-one vacancies and then wonder why our special ed achievement levels are lower and all this. So until we come up with a plan to say how we're gonna fix this, we gotta, whether it's, if you paid more for a vendor or whatever, like. You do for speech and the like. like you do for speech and the like, we gotta figure out a way. And, and now is the time, because that fifty-something between special ed, paraprofessionals, and teachers are not good. So I, do something, do something bold would be my two cents.
I think Keith is taking notes, just so you know.
Yeah, and, and I, you know what, we have to do it, and it's one thing.
They're gonna show up with T-shirts at the next meeting and say, be bold.
But everybody deserves more. Like, everybody deserves more. I don't care what they are. So we're in a, in a unit, you know, everybody deserves to get what their fair shake is. I get it. But within that, now we're at a crisis of, we have a smaller population of somebody that's specialized. Like, if, take another year, take a psychologist. School psychologists are hard to come by, right? So if that's the case, and that value to that person is more than, we just keep on doing the same, ah, let's give everybody four percent, three percent. It's not fixing the, the issue. So whatever you gotta do, let's try it. Inclusion update, status of inclusion opportunities in the district.
Yep, so I think I summarized a little bit earlier about where our substantially separate students are included. For the most part, it is those, you know, unified arts, lunch, recess.
This is just a general, right? You didn't give us a paper on this one.
No, I don't think I did.
This was built within one of the other ones.
So, you know, again, our goal is to build more of that partial inclusion stuff we can get the kids in. One of the things that I'm looking to do with these new programs, right, is also to bring in professional development for the teachers who are going to be the ones that want to try this. I want to try to have neurodiverse kids in my classroom, whether it's autism, whether it's, you know, some other disability. I want them there and I wanna do the work. So part of that will be building up our teacher capacity to have more students with disabilities in the inclusion setting. And then for the inclusion of students who are fully included. We continue to have primarily services in the ELA and the math, right? Because their IEPs are not written for content. They're written for reading, writing, the skills, right? The math skills. But they tend to put them in the English and math. Those are the tested on MCAS, right? Students tend to struggle more. So they're providing the services they need. The always the big question is what happens with science and social studies? I agree, except you have seventy-one openings. I can't get more teachers. I need to fill the openings we have. Because when I have seventy-one more staff between PARRIs and teachers, I don't even know that impact yet, right? So I would love to be able to provide the support in more content classes, right? Especially sciences. We just need to fill the positions in order to do that. I don't wanna bring on more, more positions without filling the ones that we have, to know the impact of that, right? The, let's see, so most of the time, how, how special education inclusion teachers monitor students in their science and social studies classes is grade levels have like grade level team time. The special education teacher, for the most part, can be part of that team time. So it's more of a consultation type of role. I mean, again, you know, if there's a test that needs to be accommodated, the, the teacher can support the content teacher. The special ed teacher can support the content teacher with that. They're just not physically in the room providing direct services to those kids. But I do wanna show you, I'm kind of excited about this. So I don't know if you guys are aware, but Henry Lord, the speech and language pathologist over there, hired, I'm sorry, wrote a grant for the, through the Doug Flutie Foundation, and they received a communication board. So I work with the Commission on Disability in the, in the city, and they asked me about these. So now we have fifty of these communication boards going up in our playgrounds around Fall River. And if you click on this QR code, it tells families how to use this communication board. Oh, I'm sorry. And I'm gonna ask the carpentry kids at Derfi to build posts, so it actually stands in the middle of the playground, so the kids can access it. And any family that goes to their neighborhood playground will have access to this in the, at the schools.
One of our schools already have this, or one of our?
Henry Lord has one, yes.
And I think Mrs. Roderick's was saying she wanted them in all the schools. And look what you did! You guys are just winning.
It's actually, I was talking to a family, Sylvia family, who asked me about these, and I said, they're coming. These have been backordered since October.
Oh, that's great.
Any questions?
I was gonna remark. Good work.
So inclusion, you know, I'm a stickler for that, other science and social studies. But I just think it's a bigger picture of not getting services like extra help per se with, with an adult. And then we get into, is it, if we're not given a service at all right now, I wouldn't call that a special education teacher. I would call that a teacher. So if you're a teacher that is not special ed certified, but you could provide services to kids in an inclusion setting, you'd probably have a lesser number of, some of it's a certification and special education that you need here, or.
But a second teacher. Doesn't have to be a special ed teacher.
A second teacher, right. We've never advertised a teacher, just as an inclusion teacher. It doesn't have to be special ed.
Right.
Because at that point, you might have a pool of people that are willing to do it. They just don't wanna go get the certification per se. But, you know, so that's one area. And then when you get to the lower grades, what is it, what is the model of inclusion, like the lower grades? Because now that they have just one special ed teacher that services four classrooms in first grade?
So it does vary depending on the school. It depends on the number of special education per grade. So most schools have at least one special education teacher for each grade. Some schools have also grade level PARRIs to support special education students in the inclusion setting as well. Most times, if the inclusion numbers, let's just say I have fifteen students on my caseload, and I'm a second grade special ed teacher, those students will be placed in just two different classrooms. So the teacher has a limited number of teacher, of general ed teachers that they have to work with to be able to keep them servicing kids as often as possible during the day. Depending on the numbers, though, that can expand to three classrooms, depending on how many, right? Because we try not to have a high number of special edu, the percentage of general ed to special ed shouldn't be as high as it probably is in some cases, so.
But it's not universal, that's.
No, it's not universal.
I think we need to do something in the budget related to mandating something. Couple of years ago, we had L classrooms that didn't have a foundation, foundational classroom didn't have a PARRI. Some did and some didn't. So it depends on what school you're in. School committee in the infinite wisdom made a motion to put one in every room. I think we need to do that with inclusion. When you look at it to say, there has to be some support for, especially at the younger level. You can't just keep doing, oh, well, what if it's three classes?
Well, we have PARRIs. Kate, the school committee approved, pre-K K one, all have PARRIs in their classrooms. There are a lot of openings, but we have, you guys did approve for that.
But the idea is just to say that it's not an option. And that's where I think, if it's not, so if it's in the budget and you'd say, it's all clear, great. But you've gotta look at it and say, no, we need an extra PARRI to help that other person. So like, if there's a special ed teacher, and what do they do in the other room? If she's got three rooms, she's in one room, what are those other two rooms doing?
Right, like it's.
And that can be heck to try to teach that.
Oh, I understand, yes.
That's all I'm saying, is I think we need to be bold and do some, some moves on that. Ms. Corey, do you have?
No, that's, I'm sorry, I'm playing with my mind.
Thank you for that. Team chair implementation, I see we have a one pager on this. However, some of this is work in progress based on.
So it's a work in progress, yep. So we had the last Impact Bargaining Session on the seventeenth. The rollout plan for annuals has not changed since we brought it to FREA, FREA and the school committee. I'm struggling with the filling of the two new positions. So we do have a, we have two other vacancies, one that is being filled by retirees, and a recent one where our, our new hire just really didn't work out. So, but the two new positions that I said I would fill prior to rolling out the annuals remain open. We've interviewed three people in the past week. Two of them were strong candidates. They don't wanna come onboard until the fall. Which I understand, they feel like they have to finish out the year in their current district, even though the posting doesn't say anticipated or for the fall. That's what they're asking for.
So you hired them?
So we have offered one or ones in the process of reference checks.
I'm just saying, like, you didn't just say, well, let's wait till the spring.
No, 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 no.
You're gonna try to lock them in.
No, we're gonna try. I'm trying. Now, my, my thing to them is always like, okay, I totally understand that. But what's your reassurance that you're not gonna cry in July and say you have a better offer, right? So it's always this like, you know, your hopeful game. But so one is in the reference check, the other one we just met on today, so we'll see.
My only comment on that is to have your executive team take on some of these cases to assist. And I think it'll just be an interesting exercise to see what it looks like for your team chairs or your supervisors and yourselves or whatever, to, to take on some of these, to see how they can assist. Any questions on it?
I, I'm just note that we do have thirty-one special ed teacher vacancies, all right? So we all wanna roll this out, and we wanna roll it out the right way, right? So that means there's thirty-one teachers that won't be able to hold those annuals. Somebody else will have to step in to help with holding those annuals. So, you know, we, we, we have the two team chair positions that Ms. Olin Chen is, is hiring, but she's also trying to fill these teacher positions so that we can get this all on the right foot.
Right, and the annuals are the key. And then when you read the data, some annuals are being done by team chairs. That has to, that has to change too. So if some are doing it, then.
But some are doing it, but some are also doing it stepping in.
No, I, I understand that, but when you look at the big picture, you also have documentation that this, whatever it is, let's say it's fifty percent, whatever the number is, are doing it. So now is the time, it's gotta be done. Everybody should be going. That, we shouldn't be waiting until September. That should be being done, in my opinion. It's pretty clear by the data. Special ed budget is the last item before we go.
Okay, so again, I'm currently working with Superintendent Mr. Almeida on prioritizing ARMEs. Like I said already, seventy unfilled positions, that is my number one priority. But as far as the budget goes, we're in the process of taking a closer look at, we have our in-district classroom that is currently staffed and run by SESI, which the school committee approved last year for this one year, because we could not fill our social emotional programs with staffing. So we're doing kind of an analysis of, are we ready to shift back to our, our own staff? And, you know, that will be, impact the budget in the sense of, we want to mirror the program that SESI created. So they have a little bit of a different structure, so we wanna make sure that we're able to staff that if we do that. But we're in the, again, we're working with the building principal who has this, I'm working with the SESI leadership to see what, you know, where our kids are at, and looking at, trying to pull the data. What's our suspension data? What's our restraint data? What's our academic data? For the kids that were our highest needs? Because really, this was like, can we have somebody from the outside coming in and providing more intensive services than we can do? Or are the level of needs of those students, when they get to that point, so much that we cannot meet their needs in traditional public school? Even with the specialists that we bring in, size of the school, you know, the dynamics, all of those pieces. So that's the analysis that we're doing. So those are the only, those are the pieces that might, you know, impact, depending on which way we go. And the, the one position that I felt like I really am advocating for with the superintendent and Ms. Almeida is our cluster coordinator position. So when we have the subcommittee at the end of the year in the springtime, like around May, I'm bringing these cluster coordinators here so that they can do a presentation for you on the data of our substantially separate. So we, we changed the role of the cluster coordinator this year to focus on instruction in our substantially separate classrooms. Because LEED's department heads, they're fantastic. What they don't have is the lens of special education. So they were communicating that it was a struggle to support the teachers in substantially separate classrooms. Multiple grades, significant learning needs, right? They're content experts, yes, but we needed a special ed expert too. So the cluster coordinator was the role for that. And so they're working collaboratively with the Office of Instruction staff, our LEEDs, all of those pieces, to support the teachers. I just did a survey of our substantially separate staff that are working with cluster coordinators, and the positive feedback from the teachers of the level of support, and it's all around instruction. All of it is around instruction. Principals feel very strongly. But we only, we have a limited number of them, and with the number of substantially separate programs we still have, right? They're spread very thin. One of them is supporting a community-based, social, emotional, and language-based. Three different types of programs at thirteen different classrooms. So that's the only, like, right now, need. And honestly, I have to say it, I mean, you guys gave us great feedback tonight, and we totally appreciate it on behalf of the department. But I also wanna say, the school committee has been super supportive of myself and the special education department on the needs. So I'm confident that if I need something and I come to the school committee with the data to say, this is what I need and here's why I need it, I'm confident that I can do that, even if it's not Monday with the budget presentation.
Questions?
Yes. As far as the whole department is concerned, my last turn, turn, term on the school committee, Michael Loesch set up a three-year plan moving forward for SPED. Has that plan been, been looked at, or is there consistency to what he set forth as a three-year vision? Are you making changes, or what are you doing?
So I think Mike, the vision that I, the three-year strategic plan from Michael that I saw was actually like right before, he wrote it right before COVID hit. So like, when things came back, it actually, we weren't in a place that that actually made sense, right? And, you know, just like when anyone writes the document, you write it in a way that makes sense to you. How many times do we sit with it and say, what is this really looking at? Like, what does this really mean? So we used his document, I used the Walker Report, and the latest, the last TFM from the Department of Education. And we developed, you know, kind of what our first year, our second year, like I just said, our first year was compliance, process and procedures, and substantially separate classrooms. Next year is going to be eligibility criteria, eligibility and service delivery. And then we'll continue it from there. Again, the depart, I mean, the, the school department is so big, it's hard to say, like, here's a three-year plan, because I have different areas that I feel the onion.
I wasn't trying to be literal about it. I was just thinking in terms of consistency in programming. That, just, you know, from, from one leadership team to another leadership team, and how's that playing out, you know? That's all.
Yeah, Michael never had the opportunity to start his plan before he left. So it's not like it was a huge shift for the department overall. It was written, but it wasn't.
No, I, I appreciate the way you presented tonight. You seem very knowledgeable, all, all of you do, and very enthusiastic to try to like bring it to where it needs to be. And I realize that we have staffing shortfalls, so that's limiting right off the bat. And at the same time, we have SESI mandates hanging over our heads, saying, grow it this way, grow it this way, grow it this way. So we're in that balancing act, but I'm pleased with the report that I heard tonight. With that, Ayil.
I have two things. One, I meant to ask this, and vacancies. So out of all those vacancies, are any of those positions that we had people in and they were terminated? And you can get us that data if, like, are they vacancies because we had to terminate somebody who just wasn't, you know, doing things properly or whatever, or are they vacancies truly because we just had a vacancy? And I'm all, not for terminating people, but if somebody's not getting it done and they need to be terminated, then it is what it is. The question of the cluster coordinator, so almost every year in the budget, the last three years, I've made a motion at the full committee that said to the superintendent, when we have a need, we need to do it now, especially when we have money versus waiting. Now, what you explained relative to the cluster coordinator, it's very clear and obvious to me that we need to do that now, not later. Not in the budget for the next year, because the, the data's right here, nine hundred and something, you know, like. So you convinced me anyway, as one member now, to do this right away, and it shouldn't be part of the thing. So I'd like to get a motion to, forward to the full committee to actually implement that cluster coordinator to deal with the special ed population. Now, motion is made by Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Second, is, all in favor?
Aye.
And thank you. I think we've done that before, where we said, okay, we have a need, we have some, we have the money, why are we gonna wait? So let's just kind of move that ahead as soon as possible. And any other new business, anything?
Ms. Jackie, can I ask one more question?
You can ask as many as you want.
The, the program descriptions, is that, I'd like to bring it to full committee in March, once I have all the stakeholder input. Again, I don't expect any major changes. Does that have to come now for March?
Do we need to make a motion to, is that what you are referring to?
I don't know if it has to.
To March, that's what she's, she wants to get them.
I'd say we can make a motion, subject to your changes, and just, we should have to come back here. You already gave us.
Right, that's what I mean, yeah.
So make a motion to refer the job description, sorry, the program descriptions to the full committee.
For this month, for March, sorry, for March.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Is that clarified?
Yes.
Okay, good, yes.
And I wanna thank you for your work. It's clear that everyone, Ms. Farris, the same thing, you're on the right track, and we just need to get some, some bold actions. I say that a lot, I mean, I mean it, so.
You can put a T-shirt on, yeah.
Yeah, let's boast about Fall River out there, so we can get as many recruits, new recruits as possible. Let's boast. Let's, let's be very boastful, all right?
All in to, that's right.
I make a motion to.
Second, you did all in favor? Aye. Thank you all, have a great night.